Hello. Hello and welcome to Columbus Metropolitan Club. I'm Steve Marks, I'm Chair of the CMC Board of Trustees and President of Hannah News Service here in Columbus. It's great to see everyone here today. CMC welcomes everyone and your forum flyer has a list of all members and guests who are here today. Today's Columbus Metropolitan Club Political Series Forum, Columbus City Council Candidates' Debate is brought to us with support from Hannah News Service and in partnership with the League of Women Voters of Metropolitan Columbus and Columbus Underground. Each are represented here today by many friends and associates. Won't you please help me thank them? We want to provide the candidates as much time as possible today, so let's get right to the main event. Please welcome, in alphabetical order, Elizabeth Brown, Rob Dorans, Shayla Favor, Joe Modl, Motill, Till, Emmanuel Remy, Scott Singratsimbo, and Tiffany White. And our host today, co-founder and CEO of Columbus Underground, Walker Evans. Walker, the floor is yours.
Thanks so much. Just want to thank the CMC again for having me here today, all the sponsors for being a part of this great event, and all of the candidates for being here and taking time out of your day. Quick show of hands, how many people were here four years ago when we did this for City Council? Oh wow, quite a bit, so thanks for coming back. I assume I did a good enough job four years ago, so they either invited me back or couldn't find anybody else that wanted to do it. So, just some quick ground rules, so everyone in the audience is familiar with the format. Each candidate gets 60 seconds of opening remarks, which we're going to get to in one second. There'll be five or six questions, based on how much time we have going through each of them. Each candidate gets 30 seconds to answer each of the questions. And then there are rebuttals allowed, two per candidate for the entire thing, so pick your battles. Each rebuttal will be 30 seconds in length. We're not going to do any closing comments, after that we'll go straight to the audience questions. Timing is going to be tracked over here by Andy with the colored markers, so you know, you may get cut off. Pay attention. With that, let's go straight into the opening remarks. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Walker, and thank you to CMC for having us today. My name is Elizabeth Brown and I'm proud to be your City Council member. I was raised in a family that taught me, public service is not just important, it's our responsibility. And that's what my husband and I are hopefully raising our two children, Carolyn, who's four, and Russell, who's 18 months, to believe. Fundamentally, it's also why I ran for City Council. In my first term on Columbus City Council, I have proven myself to be a leader in City Hall who knows how to get things done. I passed a paid family leave benefit for the 9,000 families that are employed by the city of Columbus. I passed an update to our pre-qualification process that incentivizes companies to hire formerly incarcerated individuals. I work to ensure that Columbus, the jobs supported by the city's programs must pay at least $15 an hour. I've worked to get scholarships to pre-K teachers and to low-income students who want to access post-secondary education. And I believe that while Columbus is a city of tremendous opportunity, we still have real work to do to level the playing field for every family and every kid. And that's my commitment as a Columbus City Council member.
Thanks. Rob?
Thank you to the organizers, thank you for everyone being here this afternoon. My name's Rob Dorans, it's been the honor of my life to serve as a Columbus City Council member over these past eight months. I moved to Columbus about 10 years ago, following my then-girlfriend, now-wife very smartly. And she was coming to Columbus to get a PhD Ohio State, I was coming for an opportunity for a new job. We're sort of that new folks who've come to Columbus at a time of immense growth and immense progress in our community. I was raised in a family that taught you, you need to serve your community when you can, so I immediately started volunteering with Columbus Legal Aid and became a volunteer in the Big Brothers Program. And through those experiences, I saw the progress that my wife and I moved here to seek out in Columbus wasn't as equally shared across all of our neighborhoods as it should be. That's why I sought out to serve my community when I, where I could. And that's why ultimately I wanted to serve on Columbus City Council, to look for ways to provide more equity for our communities. I'm a third-generation union member, I spent my career as a building trades attorney, looking for ways to find pathways to people, to the middle class. And certainly have been honored to be able to do that here at Columbus City Council, and hope to do so in the future.
Thanks a lot. Shayla?
Thank you, and thank you to the hosts for having us here. My name is Shayla Favor, and I am proud to serve as your council member for Columbus City Council. Prior to City Council, I served as an Assistant City Attorney with the Columbus City Attorney's Office in the Environmental Division that was assigned to serve the downtown, near east and south side areas of Columbus. As a zone attorney, I worked alongside the leaders of our city and community to provide essential city services, to improve Columbus's neighborhoods, and facilitate conversations to address criminal activity, vacancies, abandonment, and blight. Additionally, I have implemented two initiatives to address our city's blight. The vacant and abandoned property program, along with the receivership program, have both addressed blight through enforcement, demolition, and rehabilitation. These initiatives have effectively helped to decrease our vacant and abandoned property count, and to put once-blighted properties back into the market. I have filed numerous nuisance abatement actions against residential property owners, owners of gas stations and carryouts, that have used or permitted their property to be used to conduct illegal activity. As well as working with several...
Thank you for the abrupt stop. Joe?
Thank you to the Metropolitan Club for the opportunity and for everybody taking the time to be here today. I'm a lifelong resident of Columbus and I've worked in the commercial construction industry now for 38 years as both a blue-collar and white-collar worker. I spent the last 33 years of my life in public service while filing for equality and justice for neighborhoods, the underserved, and those without a voice. Council's abusive tax abatement policies have taken away millions from Columbus public schools and it impacts our affordable housing crisis. Checks and balances between council and the mayor's office has been nonexistent for decades. There's no debate, 99% of legislation is rubber stamped, zero accountability when lies are told about how much our tax dollars are being spent on projects, and everyone's controlled by political bosses in the Columbus Partnership. The musical chairs appointment process is in place to keep control and power over the people and to benefit council's campaign contributors. And if Ms. Brown wins and completes her four-year term, I will remove the words "tax abatement" from my vocabulary. Nearly 24 years to this day, I participated in my first city council election Metropolitan Club debate. That was the last time an incumbent Democratic City Council member lost an election, and history is going to repeat itself on November 5th. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Emmanuel?
Good afternoon. I want to thank the Metropolitan Club and certainly everyone that's in attendance today. I'm honored to have spent the last 22 months serving the city of Columbus and the residents as their, one of their council members. First of all, first and foremost, I'm a father of three Columbus City schoolchildren who I dropped off at their Columbus City School, my wife's school today, because it's a records day. And I'm very proud of her involvement with the CEA. But how I got here was being the leader and the president of the Northland Community Council for six years. In that time, I helped lead the resurrection of the Morris Road Corridor, and helped to shut down five motels up along 161 and 71 that led to the legislation that President Zack Klein at the time passed, so that everybody in the city of Columbus has the opportunity to get rid of bad actors in our community. Proud to lead the new American refugee and immigrant conversation, and what that means as a city of Columbus, as we welcome so many new Americans into this community, and to tackle legal dumping. It's been an honor to work with the mayor to make sure that our neighborhoods, especially Sullivan Avenue, is well-served in that area.
Thank you. Scott?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Scott Singratsimbo, and so yes, I have a 15-letter-long last name that my dad brought with him when he came over to the United States as a refugee from Laos. I grew up on the east side of Columbus, joined the Army way back in 2004 as a tank mechanic. Spent some years on active duty, including a deployment to Iraq. I've since moved into the Army Reserve where I serve as a paralegal, and I've always fought for the little guy, or the little guy and gal. I've helped hundreds of service members fight for disability benefits from the VA. I have served as a suicide prevention leader, an equal opportunity leader, and a substance abuse prevention leader. I've also served as a youth mentor. I've also helped victims of sexual assault navigate the legal process. So for me, it's always about finding folks that could use a helping hand and move their lives forward. My priorities for City Council are education, because I think that's the long-term solution to a lot of our problems. I also want to work on the affordable housing issue, because housing in Columbus is not becoming more affordable. And finally, I'd like to see some diversity on City Council, where we have not had any diversity in the last 20 years.
Thanks a lot. And Tiffany?
Good afternoon. My name is Tiffany White, and thank you Metropolitan Club for having us and guests. I have been a lifelong resident of the city of Columbus, and I have been an active community advocate for over a decade. I've served on the North Central Area Commission, as well as my Safety Commission, that we had a seven-hour endeavor yesterday regarding recommendations. I'm a concerned citizen, and that's why I got involved. For me, stability is the key to my campaign. Without a stable home, equitable education, equitable resources as far as public services, you cannot have vibrant communities, because you have individuals working multiple jobs, and they're not able to be with their children, partake in their school activities, or be an active participant in their community. I also believe that public safety is paramount. As I said, I am on the Safety Commission, and the work that we have done is really important. I want to make sure that the recommendations that we put forward go forward. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks so much, everyone. We're going to move straight into the questions. Again, you have 30 seconds to answer these, so please keep them nice and concise. Our first question, "The city of Columbus made a pledge to commit $50 million to the process of relocating the Columbus Crew SE Soccer Team into a new downtown stadium. That money was said to cover infrastructure expenses and renovations to the Olmafrey Stadium site for community use. Bill Bush at the Dispatch reported earlier this month that costs have already expanded to nearly $98 million. What is City Council's role in maintaining fiscal responsibility to taxpayers in this specific example of cost overruns?" We're going to start with Rob and work our way down.
Well, I think as a community, we're all very proud to be able to retain and asset like the Crew in our community. I think it's important to know, the only thing that's come before council at this point is the $50 million commitment, both for the infrastructure improvements directly connected to Olmafrey Stadium and the redev... or, I'm sorry, the new Crew Stadium, and the direct redevelopment of Olmafrey. I think it's important for us to continue to make sure that we're doing all we can to make sure that, from a community standpoint, we can, we don't pay for a stadium, because I don't think that's a good thing for the city to do. But I think it's important for us to have actual infrastructure investments that spur additional investments in a new neighborhood in our city.
Thanks Shayla.
Our commitment to the infrastructure for the new stadium and improvements to Olmafrey remain the same. This project will be a part of a mixed-use economic district, which will include a new park, new bike paths, bridges, office buildings, provide opportunities for jobs, and new apartments, and also a new garage that will pay for itself over time. No project is ever developed in a silo, and so council will review future projects as they relate to additional public infrastructure to support the nearly $1 billion private investment in the arena, excuse me, in the area.
Thanks, Joe.
Let's face it, this additional money is all about the Crew Stadium. It wasn't about helping for the apartments, it's about Chipotle and other things of that nature. I've worked in the construction industry nearly 40 years, I understand cost overruns better than anybody on this table, and how contracts and specifications and documents are written, and who abides to them. And I've actually checked up on a lot of them since I've been running for City Council. I have, don't have time to talk about those, but this was, you know, this is another example of no democracy within the city of Columbus, taxpayers not having a say in terms of how our tax dollars are being spent, we got more priorities to spend our money on.
Cool. Thank you. Emmanuel?
Listen, we're going to double the size of the Arena District in the next 10 years, and to do so, there's a lot of infrastructure improvements that need to be made, and this is all part of that. But really, what we've passed already is the $50 million investment that we committed to, and certainly there are other issues, Chipotle is one of them, of course. That office is going to bring a number of people into this community, which are good-paying jobs. The sports complex up at Olmafrey Stadium is going to serve 200,000 people within a three-mile radius. We absolutely are going to commit to investing in this that benefits the entire city of Columbus.
Thanks. Scott?
We can quadruple the Arena District, but if you talk to residents in South Columbus, West Columbus, Linden, they have a hard time making the connection between downtown developments and their own economic prosperity. Now perhaps we're waiting for it to trickle down to them, it just hasn't done that yet, but we cannot make that connection. And I think absolutely that the city of Columbus has the priorities backwards, where we're spending millions and millions and tens of millions of dollars on development, when folks don't see it happen, helping their own pocketbooks.
Thanks. Tiffany?
So, I think everyone is in agreement that keeping a major soccer team is important. However, the voters didn't get an opportunity to vote for it. What's going to happen when it doesn't yield the results that we want it to yield? And I appreciate the fact that there is going to be a sports complex, however, who is that sports complex going to serve? I've voiced my concerns, and I want to make sure that it's inclusive of those communities, but there is a highway that divides those that are economically able to participate versus those who are not.
Thanks. Elizabeth?
The community sports park that will be located at the current Olmafrey site has 200,000 residents within a three-mile radius, and the city is already looking towards connectivity of that site, so thank you, Ms. White, for pointing that out. I think that is something very critical, we have to take a look at. And then additionally, the economic development agreement that we authorized stipulated $50 million to go towards the sports park, and needed infrastructure right around the stadium. Other investments in that area, I don't really care what the Crew owners think of them, what Crew interests think of them, we are going to analyze those investments based on whether they will pay off in income taxes and revenue that will help us develop the rest of the city, and safe roads, trash pickup, things that benefit our whole city when we make money on one district.
Thank you. Thanks. So, speaking of tax abatements, there's been a lot of discussion around the city's tax abatement process over the past couple of years, including both job creation tax breaks, as well as residential and commercial development tax breaks. Abatements can be used as a tool for business growth and help increase the income tax base, but are also a detriment to property tax revenue, which in turn causes an impact to the budgets of Columbus City Schools. Many residents feel these programs are unfair, as they represent handouts to companies that stand to make a profit even without the abatements in place. Have we done enough to reform these programs and make sure these tools are being used correctly, or are there still changes to be made? Shayla, we're going to start with you.
Sure. So, you're absolutely correct. As one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation, Columbus does compete to locally, no, nationally, excuse me, nationally and locally attract residents and businesses to our city. They do provide an opportunity to promote local economic development, preserve our local tax base as it is, and create new jobs. But that incentive must always be balanced with our commitment to our schools and our community, and I believe we're able to continue to strike that balance by working closely with the Columbus School Board of, excuse me, the School Board, as well as use, through our use of the Tax Incentive Review Committee.
Thanks. Joe?
Tax abatements are completely abused in this town, they're given out to risk-free developments such as the Short North, Downtown, Plaris, Easton, and Rickenbacker, where there are no distressed neighborhoods, and it needs to stop immediately. We're wasting our tax dollars on it, these people are going to locate and build here no matter what, based on the amenities that are located here in the Columbus area. So, we have to stop, the rich and the luxury real estate developers have to start paying their fair share of taxes, so that we can continue to help with revenue that will help our children's education, so that they can get out of the grasp of poverty, and also stop the impact that they're having on our affordable housing crisis.
Thanks. Emmanuel?
I was proud last year to join my colleagues in working on some of the reforms that we added to the abatement process, those being good-paying jobs and affordable housing element as we look at overall development. We're not done, we're going to continue to look at this, but we have to look at what we have to compete with regionally and nationally. And so, we are, I'm proud that we're working hard on this, and we will continue to work hard on it, because we're not going to let development stop within the city of Columbus.
Thanks. Scott?
Tax abatements are mismanaged. The vast majority of city development would occur without tax abatements, and some businesses have received tax abatements for millions of dollars for creating fewer than 10 wage, 10 low-wage jobs. And our tax incentives overall are structured to give bigger businesses better rates and terms than smaller businesses. So what we're setting up is market consolidation, when we should be promoting market competition.
Thanks. Tiffany?
So, I agree that they don't bring the jobs that they always guarantee to yield. I guess my bigger concern is that if we're the fastest-growing city, you're going to come here regardless. You're going to set up shop regardless, you're going to move here for the job opportunities. The fact of the matter is, is that if you look at the low-income housing coalition, you have to make more than $15 an hour. So starting that as a base is not good enough in neighborhoods that really, really need that. We're also not providing businesses in those distressed communities the opportunity to get those abatements.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
We have to be judicious in our use of tax abatements, and we are committed to doing that. I was very proud to work on the tax abatement overhaul that we did last year, and as my colleague stated, we made some key improvements. One of the things we also included was that we forced council to take a look at the policy every three years. We had not revisited that policy in a couple decades, and so that is our commitment to do an ongoing review. I am not satisfied to say that, let's just sit back and it will happen anyway. I think that is a recipe for disaster going forward, if we don't think we have a part to pay, play in achieving equitable growth here.
Thanks. And Rob?
Yeah, I would just like to underscore something my colleague, Liz Brown, just mentioned, is that review period. One of the things that's really important when you talk about any kind of incentive program is to make sure that it's actually doing the thing we want it to do, and shortening that to three years, and potentially taking a look at, maybe doing that even on a more ongoing basis. I think it's really important for us to hold folks accountable who are getting these incentives, and at the same time, make sure as a community, we're focused on things that we want, things like affordable housing, things like a $15 minimum wage. Because again, we need to have that review process, otherwise, again, you can just go on in perpetuity without really focusing on what the community needs at that point.
Cool. Thanks. And Emmanuel wants to follow up?
Some people make a career out of sexy soundbites, but I got to tell you, it's a little bit more than sexy soundbites when we think about development within the city of Columbus in the context of regional competition with our suburban partners, and most recently, the national competition that we face every single day in economic development. We can all argue that they would come anyway, but I got to tell you that, you know, these things do work. Easton paid $400,000 to the city, to the city schools, and now pays $26 million a year. So investment, over time, does work.
Joe?
Study after study proves that companies do not locate based on a tax incentive. That's absurd and ridiculous, and it's not a soundbite. Read the facts, know the facts, and understand what's going on here, folks. These people are going to locate here no matter what. The Tax Incentive Review Council that looks at these, alls they do is amend these tax abatements, and they don't penalize them, they should be penalized, because they're not paying their property taxes based on the criteria that they were given the abatement for, that doesn't create the jobs they said they would.
Cool. Anybody else? Yep.
So, and the one thing that you haven't heard is that developers and the big businesses that receive tax abatements make huge, hundreds of thousands of dollars in campaign contributions to the folks who go out and approve the tax abatements. I have a problem with that. We also haven't talked about our schools and how they affect our schools, because education is my number-one priority. When we give tax abatements that are worth tens of millions of dollars, we reduce school funding by tens of millions of dollars. And Columbus City Schools have received D's and F's in every statistical category on their state report cards as far back as you can go. And I have a problem with that. We also have kids who are out of school for air conditioning, we have problems with streetlights and walkways, and all these things that we need to do, and tax abatements are part of the problem. I'm not against tax incentives, but we have to manage them better.
Thanks, Scott. Elizabeth?
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Motill saying that the Turk, all it does is amend things. The Turk is an intergovernmental body made up of city, school board, auditor, and actually, the city council has revoked tax incentives most years. If a tax incentive doesn't perform, then we will revoke it, and we have a record of doing so.
Our next question's related, so just in the interest of moving on and keeping with time. The Columbus region just surpassed the 2 million population mark in 2016. It's expected to hit the 3 million mark by 2050, so it's over 30,000 new residents per year for the next 30 years. To accommodate that growth, our city needs a variety of new homes, apartments, and living units in our cities and suburbs alike. A large percentage of new development is priced outside the range of many middle-income and working-class citizens. What role should the city of Columbus have in the construction and affordability of providing housing units for mid-range income levels? Joe, we're starting with you.
I've proposed a $250 million bond package, for one thing. It is a comprehensive plan that we need to take care of, but affordable housing would be split into homeowner assistance, land acquisition, and affordable housing development, rental house repair, repair, and rehab. And I would also increase the amount of hotel motel tax that goes into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and decrease the amount that goes from, to the Columbus Convention Visitors Bureau, and also into the Culture Arts, reducing theirs as well, because they are going to receive $6 million in additional money from the art tax, on top of all the additional revenue from the new hotels that are being built.
Thanks. Emmanuel?
We have to continue to work to make sure that our neighborhoods aren't fully gentrified. We have to make sure that there's opportunities for everyone to live in the city of Columbus, and to do so, we will continue to work with the housing, with the Housing Authority, the Land Trust, and try to make sure that we're getting appropriate housing for everyone. But I'm excited to work with our auditor, with our state legislature, to try to work to help freeze taxes for seniors in their homes, those that are in neighborhoods that are facing rising tax costs and they can't afford to stay there. We're going to continue to work and push on our legislature.
Thanks. Scott?
The most affordable housing in Columbus is at Nationwide Arena, $0 rent, and what will be the new Crew Stadium, $10 rent. I have a problem with that. So we need it all above the approach when it comes to affordable housing. I live in Old Town East, and so many of my neighbors are getting pushed out. We are gentrifying in my area, and I need to find ways, and I want to find ways to stop that. So I want to work with nonprofits and community leaders to build partnerships, to develop best practices. I'd use our affordable housing budget to provide property tax relief to seniors, fund home efficiency improvement programs, develop micro lending programs, and perhaps even fund down payment assistance programs.
Thanks. Tiffany?
Okay, so the affordable housing crisis is a big issue. I think the biggest thing is accountability. There are several housing projects that are occurring that are just at a standstill and a halt, that would provide some affordable units. And in the interim, we continue to give and grant contracts and incentives to these same developers to develop somewhere else. So we need to stop that. If you cannot finish your project, then we should not give you incentives to do another one. The next thing is, is we need to remove those barriers. We should use smaller developers that are really interested in keeping the community cohesive, as well as inclusive.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Affordable housing is a critical challenge that we need to solve as a city, and I believe we do have the opportunity to do it. Columbus is growing rapidly, but we can get our arms around this problem when we focus on it. I am very proud of the work that Council Member Favor is leading as Chair of the Housing Committee, and she has, in her time on council, already announced several key initiatives that also zero in on another piece of the housing problem, which is evictions. I will let her talk about that. But complex problems such as housing affordability rarely have singular solutions, and we are focused on all parts of the spectrum to help create a more affordable landscape going forward.
Rob?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, there's no silver bullet when it comes to figuring out how to address the housing crisis that's going on in our community. I do think as well, we need to recognize that this isn't just a city of Columbus issue, this is a regional issue. And when you talk about our suburban partners, and we're talking about, folks are moving our community, it's a regional issue when you're talking about folks being pushed away from the urban core, further away from jobs, further away from healthcare, further away from educational opportunities. So it's not just an issue about what can we do here in the city, we need to continue to work with our suburban partners as well on this issue.
Shayla?
So I think it's incumbent upon us to continue to be creative and innovative to solve our affordable housing crisis. There is no one-stop-shop approach that is going to solve our problem on the east side or the west side. And so when you think about what we can do right now, we can take practical measures to truly start to solve some of the issues, just nitpicking, excuse me, chipping away at it, just little by little. And so we just recently rolled out the eviction prevention program. There are 18,000 evictions filed every single year in Franklin County. And so, what we have is a partnership with the Impact Community Housing Action Network as well as with legal aid to provide actual emergency assistance as well as representation in eviction court to make sure people can stay in their homes.
Joe, yeah, go ahead.
One of those creative ways she's speaking of is, I think we need to start empowering the people that live in these neighborhoods to have an impact in terms of buying these properties, creating more community development corporations like we used to have. And that way, the cost of the new housing would be less expensive than, not to say anything bad about Homeport, it's a good organization, but they almost have a market on what's going on here. We need to allow small business people to start buying these properties. That way, they'll be cheaper, less expensive, people can start staying in their homes and stay in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, go ahead, Sheila.
I actually agree with Mr. Motil on this one. And so, that's why I'm very excited about the Community Land Trust. There is an opportunity for small developers and individuals to get involved in that process. The Community Land Trust is a shared equity model where the homeowner actually owns the property and the trust owns the land. And there's an incentive there for the homeowner to continue to invest into the property. And so, when they do move from that property, they can take that equity with them to their next piece of property. And so, there's an opportunity there for homeownership and for you to generate wealth for your family.
Thanks a lot. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think one of the other things that the city needs to do when we talk about affordable housing as a holistic solution is to make sure we're bringing in our community partners. We have 21 area commissions all across the city that represent true neighborhood voices all across our entire community. And having those folks be better engaged about what affordable housing looks like in their neighborhoods and having them understand how they manifest themselves to people in their community, I think is really important to make sure that folks really understand how this problem happens and how they can be solved in their own communities. So, I think it's incumbent upon us as a city to make sure that we're empowering those folks at a local level.
Thanks. Tiffany?
I think what Rob is saying is great, but the problem is it hasn't happened. I'm an area commissioner, it's not happening. I've had individuals attempt to purchase properties and have been blocked by developer after developer after developer. If they can open their front door and look at their investment property, they're going to make sure it's taken care of. We have far too many organizations and corporations that own hundreds of properties within the city and they're waiting for the opportune time to sell it to the highest bidder.
So, according to One Columbus, the Economic Development Organization previously known as Columbus 2020, our city's added over 150,000 jobs and increased per capita income 30% over the last decade. Despite that, we still have high levels of income inequality across the city and region, neighborhoods and suburbs of extreme wealth and neighborhoods of extreme poverty. Minimum wage in Ohio will increase to $8.70 to the start of 2020, which is the equivalent of an $18,000 per year salary. According to U.S. Census data, between 2017 and 2018, the annual median household income for white households in Franklin County rose by $665, but for African-American households, it fell by $1,123. As city council candidates, what ideas do you have to put forth to ensure that everyone in the region is taking part in a growing economy? Emmanuel?
We're working hard to make sure that we're starting people out at a $15 an hour. But that's not enough. I attended a conference on Monday night about the poverty and the African despair. We need to stop talking about jobs, but also talk about careers. This is the important thing. Jobs are something that may be here today and gone tomorrow, but careers are something that lasts a lifetime. So, we want to work with people like Nana Watson and the NAACP, with our union partners, CCS, to make sure that there are opportunities that are well-known throughout the community, that there are career opportunities for good wages for people throughout every neighborhood and zip code in the city.
Scott?
These issues are all related, right? Affordable housing, well, for that, you know, if you're not going to receive something from the government, then you're looking at having a good job or a good career. And for that, you have to have a strong education. So, for me, it all goes back to education as a long-term solution. But more short-term, I think that we need to look at the way we tax businesses. So much of the way we've set it up favors big businesses receiving better terms and rates than small businesses. The ultimate expression of economic freedom is business ownership. And if we want to support that, if we want to support our small businesses, then we need to change the way we do our taxes so that they can grow and thrive.
Thanks. Tiffany?
I think we do need to support entrepreneurship and businesses, but we also have to provide access to quality education and remove those barriers and those stigmas, especially in Columbus City schools. The resources are not available. I know the trades are working to outreach more into communities of color, but there are so many barriers there. Those re-entering from incarceration, their opportunities for a career are blocked. They have to get a job, but they still have to put food on the table. We don't want them to reoffend. So, we need to come up with ideas where everyone has that opportunity to get a piece of the pie. Nationally, we talk about payer, fair share, equitable living wages, but we're not even doing it locally.
Thanks. Elizabeth?
Look, I think all of this starts with investing in our kids. If we really want to change the picture of equality in our city, the city that I'm going to leave to my two children, we have to start investing in children. 90% of kids' brains are formed before they're three years old, excuse me, before they're five years old. And we need to chart a path towards more access to affordable and high-quality early childhood learning in this city. It's critically important. It's something I'm deeply committed to in my hopefully upcoming term on Columbus City Council because I can't think of a more important economic development investment than the brains of our young children.
Thanks a lot. Rob?
So, I've spent my career looking for ways to provide workforce development pathways for people in our community. Prior to joining council, I was one of the folks that worked with the city to create the first community benefit agreement, which is a contract between our local labor organizations and the city to put local people to work building our own construction projects. When you talk about a city that just passed a $900 million capital budget, there's a lot that we can do with our own contracting power to make sure that we're putting folks to work here locally, giving them a skill and a trade that again can't be outsourced, that again provides a living wage, affordable healthcare and retirement benefits.
Sheila?
I'm sorry. So, recently I had a conversation with the Workforce Development Board and learned that there are 30,000 jobs in our county that are unfulfilled. And so, those are skills jobs, those are jobs that require certifications and/or degrees. And so, it's imperative for me to figure out what are, what is the role that we can play to make sure individuals have the opportunity to have opportunity and access to those jobs. And so, is that bringing job training services into community centers? Is it providing childcare for individuals who may need to go to work in the evening? There are opportunities for us to make sure that we're building a workforce in the city of Columbus that is supportive of our growth.
Thanks. Joe?
If we're going to invest in our children and our kids, we need to stop the abuse of tax abatements so we have the revenue there to help them. And also, I was the only person who actually went before the Charter Review Commission five years ago, asking that they establish a minimum wage and put it on the ballot for the citizens of Columbus to decide in terms of home rule. Secondly, as a union member, I have worked with Nana Watson and the NAACP in trying to get minorities into the construction trades, but it seems to be ignored. And it's not, we're not getting anywhere with it. We have these fairs, construction fairs, but we need to start reaching out into the communities, reaching out to these people in the communities who know who the individuals are that need these jobs and approach them. We need to prioritize our neighborhood needs and not the ones here in the short north and downtown.
Cool. Thanks a lot. Do we have time for one more question or ready to go Q and A? Cool. All right. So, it seems it's tradition to take audience questions. Please state your name and ask your question for the candidates. Please avoid editorial comments and I'll reserve the right to avoid a question if it's directed to a single candidate or too vague. So, please ask a question that everyone can answer. Let's go ahead and get started.
Thank you. I'm Eric Brown, a member of the Columbus City School Board. I appreciate all of the conversation about education. I think we've heard about education from all seven of you more than any other topic and I agree, it's important. I appreciate the partnership that we've had with the city, with city council with respect to many of the topics that have been talked about, with respect to financial incentives for development. We appreciate the time and opportunity that we've had to give careful consideration of those few projects that come to us. One of the things that I want to ask about specifically is that mentorships are very important for our students. We have over 50,000 students. Ideally, we'd like to see every single one of our students have a mentor. They need role models, they need people that they can relate to, they can, they need people beyond whatever family support is available to them to help. What can you do as a councilperson with respect to allowing and working with us on your employees, because you've got quite a few people that work for the city, being able to come into the schools and serve as mentors?
Thanks.
Beyond that, about your own selves personally?
Yeah. Let's start with Scott and work down.
Sure. So, I have worked as a youth mentor and I would absolutely champion any program that brings folks into the schools to serve as mentors for our kids. It's one of the things that we need. We need great, upstanding adults teaching our kids, right? How to work in society, how to do things that, you know, that are everyday perhaps to us, but may not be so well-known, especially to low-income kids.
Cool. Tiffany?
I do think mentorship is very important, but I also think when you give that opportunity to your employees, it should be paid time. I worked for National City Bank eons ago and I was, I was at Ohio Avenue Elementary School and I was able to use my work time to do that. And many times, you're doing that on your lunch hour. And I don't think that is even enough time for some young people because they have so many barriers and traumas. And we need to deal with those traumas. We need to have folks that are in the community that can not only do it during the school day, but can work with these kids after school because we have latchkey kids and we have homeless kids taking care of their homeless siblings.
Thanks. Elizabeth?
Yeah, actually, one of the things I was really proud that my office worked on across council was to recruit staff members and across city council to be mentors, to serve as mentors and to your point, Ms. White, during work time. So, we just recruited our current class and we have 10 folks that are sort of initial, I guess, offering to the schools, Member Brown, to begin their mentorship relationship with students and we're really proud to have done that.
Thanks. Rob?
So, I've been a volunteer in the Big Brothers Program for eight years with my little brother Daylon and he's 16 now and he still likes to hang out with me. So, I feel like that's success to some degree that a 16-year-old wants to hang out with me. So, I understand the importance of having strong mentorship because, you know, I feel like he's taught me as much as I've taught him over the years. But I want to underscore something that Councilmember Brown has worked on in addition to her time on council and we've all worked on together, is the APS program through the Columbus Recreation and Parks, where we take young folks who may be at-risk youth and get them positions within the city for summer jobs, pay them and assign them job coaches, mentors, to make sure that they understand what it's like to get up and go to work every day and have the resources that they need to be successful in the future. I think that's important to expand that program as we have.
Thanks a lot. Sheila?
So, as an African-American female attorney, it has always been incredibly important for me to make sure that I'm accessible to students. And so, it's something that I take very seriously. Just recently, we were at a, at a school that is specifically for African-American females on Brighton Road. And so, I got all kinds of questions. You won't even imagine the type of questions that I had. I had to get permission to even answer those questions. But it's important to remain accessible as a council member because I know if, if you don't see it, you don't believe it. And so, it's important for me to make sure that I am providing opportunity and access for students to see what they can be.
Thanks. Joe?
As the seasoned candidate up here, I've had a lot of mentors in my life and especially in the sports as an athlete. And through that, I've always felt the responsibility to pass that on to other young people as a coach of, you know, coaching my children in their teams in softball and basketball, high school basketball and everything like that. So, and as a person who's volunteered at Tuttle Park Rec Center for now the last 27 years, that type of activity is very important to me as both a mentor and also we need internships as well. So, I think the rec centers could be used as such a program to have those kinds of mentorship and internship programs to reach out to people that need them.
Thanks a lot. Emmanuel?
Columbus City schoolchildren are my passion. I had Dr. Keisha Hunley Jenkinsen who runs the mentorship program. We were just strategizing about that. How do we get more people from the city of Columbus, our employees, working in that, helping in that way? I've had a number of high school students that have been mentors for me and those are full immersion internships. They're sitting in on the crew meetings, they're sitting in on the meetings. I believe in exposing our kids to every experience that they have so that it helps to shape their future in their minds.
Great. Thanks. Let's go to the next question.
Hi, my name is Esther Flores and I'm founder of a nonprofit and I work with women who are trafficked, their children and the transgender folks on the west side. I have one question to Liz and the three, and her three friends. City council recently provided $100,000 to fund the Salvation Army Mount Street Drop-In Center, which is directly across Hiltonian Middle School. The center is open during school hours. The city officials denied the funding for a drop-in center on Sullivan Avenue where residents objected to the location being near a school. What are the reasons the Mount Street Drop-In Center received funding and the other one located on the epicenter of human trafficking, opiate addiction, addiction with the highest infant mortality and the deaths of three women? Why did they deny the funding?
The question was just for the sitting councilmembers, but we want to give everybody an opportunity to respond to the question.
Well, they all can answer.
Sure. Yeah. So, Tiffany, do you have any thoughts?
Sure. As a, as a mother of a child who is actually addicted to opioids, this is something I'm very passionate about. I do believe that we should have drop-in centers. I think they should be all over the city of Columbus. Human trafficking leads to a lot of the opioid addiction because it's someone that you feel a kinship to or a friendship to or a relationship to that gets you into this. And then, they just recruit, recruit, recruit. And these individuals are getting younger and younger. My oldest granddaughter is 11. I think the youngest person that I've encountered is about 13. That's scary. There's two-years difference between the two.
Thanks. Elizabeth?
Human trafficking is a plague on Sullivan Avenue and I don't see Esther. I'm trying to look her in the, hi Esther. And I thank you for the work that you're doing on the west side. I've visited your facilities, I've sat with you, I've visited Catch Court multiple times. I've had one-on-one conversations with women who are in recovery. And it is critical that the city focus on opportunities to help women heal, to help, to ensure that, I know that what you do Esther, is to be there for women when they're ready. I think that's critically important. We can't expect a light bulb to go, I'm sorry, it's very hard to answer a question like that in 30 seconds because it's so complex. And, well, I will, I will let others.
To be continued. Yeah, thank you. Rob?
Yeah, I think this gets back to something earlier I was talking about with empowering and educating our area commissions to be a little more proactive about things that are being located in the community. One thing I've tried to do as the Chair of the Neighborhoods Committee is to do a series of empowerment meetings with folks to really drill down to how we can make those area commissions more successful. Because they don't, if they don't understand what's being located in their neighborhoods, they're more likely to react negatively and just say no, 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 even if they don't understand the issues and the need for those kinds of facilities in their community. So, one of the things I'm hoping to do in the future is to make sure that we're bringing folks in, experts on human trafficking, on different issues, to make sure that they're put in front of these folks who are making these kinds of decisions at the local zoning level.
Thanks, Sheila.
So, there are a lot of initiatives that council is doing to help resolve the issues around human trafficking. There's funding that sources that go to Equitas that provide drop-in resources as well. But we know that there is much work to be done as a city, excuse me, as an assistant city attorney. This is work that I was doing prior to council. And so, there's absolutely opportunities for us to expand our reach and to work with the new Columbus Police Department that will specifically address the issues around human trafficking as well as drug trafficking in our communities. So, we recognize there's a gap there and looking forward to bringing that group up and running with our communities again.
Thanks. Joe?
I'm a father to an addicted daughter as well and it is a very important issue to me. I actually fought my neighbors in Clintonville when the Clintonville Resource Center was being discussed about locating close to my neighborhood. A lot of people didn't want it there. They didn't want undesirables maybe pushing around, a shopping cart in the area and so forth. I was very outspoken about this matter.[1675.01] the area and so forth. I was very outspoken about this matter. And also, I feel like the west side has been ignored long enough. It's turned into the dumping ground. We need, again, prioritize our city tax dollars. Where are we going to spend them? Is it about the underserved and the people that need it the most, or is it about the rich and powerful of this city?
Thanks. Emmanuel?
Sure. Esther, you know, you came in and talked to my council team. My aide went out and looked at the site that you were proposing. We certainly appreciate. I was really kind of proud of what I saw. I appreciate your work in the community. It's very, but it's not a definitive answer. We say come back. Let's talk about where you're at today, where you were last year versus where you're at today. And there's certainly possibilities that we could help fund in the future.
Scott?
Human trafficking is a plague, and I think that the recruiters are very clever in finding ways to get victims. I live in Old Town East. I see a lot of prostitutes where I am, and it's not a problem that's going away. So we really have to, we really have to deal with it. I'm also an accountant by trade, and for me, a budget reveals your priorities. And I think that's something that we need to absolutely fund and provide more resources so good folks like Esther can go out and do that work because it's terrible, and we have to do whatever we can to fight it.
Thanks a lot. I think we have, oh, yeah.
I just want to add that budgets are a document of priorities. And to be clear about, you know, Esther's question, city council did put funding for a drop-in center. We weren't able to fund the one that Esther specifically spoke about that she was working for on Sullivan. And we need to have a continued conversation about that. But we not only funded the Salvation Army Drop-In Center, but also the Equitas Drop-In Center. So our budget does affect our serious priority to get our arms around this issue because every day that women are trafficked, not just women, but mostly women, every day that women are trafficked is a day that we need to do better.
Thanks. I think we have time for one more question?
Hi, everyone. My name's Stephanie Meggus. I work in the technology connectivity space and moved here from out of state. My question to you all is, what will you do to continue the growth of the city to remain competitive for young talent, especially in the tech economy? I heard Council President Harden talk about Amazon and HQ2 this morning. Tell me your approach going forward.
Can you repeat the question real quick? For Joe, the main part of the question?
What will you do to continue the growth of the city to remain competitive for young or any talent in this space?
Gotcha. Thanks. Elizabeth?
I mean, I think the key thing that we need to do is make sure Columbus, as we're growing, we remain an affordable, accessible place to live. I think that's how you recruit young talent. You have opportunity here for people to live and thrive and build their families. And so a couple of the key sort of macro goals the city has are all about achieving that ongoing growth. So how are we achieving more affordable housing affordability? How are we building better transit systems that actually connect people to the work that they do? And I see my red flag, 30 seconds really is short. But thank you for the question. It's critical.
Thanks. Rob?
Yeah, 30 seconds is short, so I'm going to do my best. I mean, I think to Councilmember Brown's point, it's about retaining folks in our community. We have a huge generator of talent at Ohio State and other educational partners here in our community. It's about making sure that when folks come from, whether it's Toledo or Cleveland or Cincinnati or Chicago or LA, that they feel like this is a community that accepts them, that has the amenities and affordability that they want when they look at wanting to find out where they put down roots. You know, my wife and I were here for a couple of months before we looked around and thought, why would we ever leave? We want to make sure that we continue to have that kind of mentality when we're talking about young people in our community.
Thanks. Sheila?
So Columbus has become an incubator of new creators in the region. And so it's important that we make sure that we're providing support and services to make sure that those folks don't leave, whether it's through helping with the Rev. One Initiative, or Give Back Hack, or even Columbus Fashion Week. I know that that might sound a little trivial, but when you think about it, that truly is talking about economic development and generating growth in our city. And so when we're able to keep people here that are helping to generate funds in our city, we want to make sure that they stay. Sorry.
Thanks. Joe?
Like I said, I've been a resident of Columbus for 63 years. I've seen it grow, and it's doing a fine job of growing. It's one of the largest growing cities in the Midwest. We all know that. Look at the skyline, look out the window. We all know what's going on. But we, again, we need to still prioritize our tax dollars and where they're being spent. We've got distressed neighborhoods and underserved that need to be taken care of and where our priorities are, not just what's taking place here in the short north and downtown and Plares and Eastern areas and Rick and Backer. So please, let's prioritize our tax dollars to neighborhoods that need it and keep bringing people in. We're doing fine.
Thank you. Emmanuel?
Columbus is a welcoming city. I mean, you can just look at our new American immigrant and refugee populations that are doing secondary relocation into the city. But we've got to continue to make sure that everybody feels welcome in every zip code of the community. And look at different avenues. I'm thinking a little bit about Ohio State and their partnership with Children's Hospital and scientific research that's going to make up the west campus side of things. We're going to become a major player in that realm, and we've got to continue to foster growth throughout all different sectors of the community.
Scott?
I want to unleash the potential that we have in this city. That's what I want to focus on. We have communities in this city that they can't take risks because they're low-income and they have no backup plan. We need to provide those folks resources. We need to provide those folks education. We have communities in this city who are afraid of the police. We have to find ways to bridge that gap. We have a lot of work to do. That's the way I think that we get unleashed potential because we have so much potential here already.
Thanks a lot. Tiffany?
So I appreciate those that come into this city to take the tech jobs, but I think that we have great opportunity in our own backyard as far as our children. Every decision that we make on council has a five, 10, 15, 20-year bump. So we're looking at our future employees. So we need to make sure that we are preparing them for the jobs and careers of the future and not gearing them toward testing and examinations and labeling when they have disabilities.
Thanks so much. I'm really happy everyone kept it right on time and everything. So appreciate that. Yeah, gonna turn it back over to Steve for a few closing remarks.[1701.32][1701.32][applause]
He did a wonderful job of keeping us on time. I hope you found today's forum educational that as we move closer towards voting, that you learned something that'll help you make an intelligent vote. It's one of our most important rights we have. So we encourage you to continue the conversation with coffee and cookies. And guests, we invite you to explore membership with friends from the membership committee at the table in the back with the windows. You'll see the flag back there. And help me thank our sponsor, Hannah News,[1732.42][1732.42][applause] and partners, Columbus Underground and the League of Women Voters of Metropolitan Columbus.[1741.22][1741.22][applause] And of course, let's thank our speakers, Elizabeth Brown,[1749.01][1749.01][applause] Rob Dorans,[1752.82][1752.82][applause] Shayla Favor,[1756.13][1756.13][applause] Joe Motel,[1758.82][1758.82][applause] Emmanuel Remy,[1761.22][1761.22][applause] Scott with 15 letters in his last name, Singram Sumbo, and Tiffany White. And of course, Walker Evans, who did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And special thanks to all of you. We look forward to seeing you next week at CMC.[1777.51][1777.51][applause][1778.51][1778.51][music]